Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council's meeting this evening. It's Monday, December 2nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM. We are in regular session tonight. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that Athens County is located on the land historically settled and cultivated by indigenous peoples, including the Shauni and the Osage, as well as those from cultures commonly referred to as the Adina, Hopewell, and Fort Ancient. This acknowledgement serves as a reminder to honor history, the people who came before us, and the planet as we strive to enhance our city's legacy. Our first order of business this evening is to establish a forum. We have five of seven council members here this evening. We do have a forum. Next, I would like to invite a motion to amend this evening's agenda to include an executive session that would follow our opportunity for citizens to speak at the end of the meeting. I would accept this motion for the purpose of having council discuss pending litigation. May I have a motion?
And it's actually threatened litigation.
Threatened litigation.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to include executive session. The agenda has officially been amended.
You voted on it.
Oh, thank you. May I have everyone who supports the change in the agenda indicate so by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, the agenda is now officially amended. All right, disposition of minutes for our November 18th, 2024 meeting. May I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay? All right, the minutes from our November 18th meeting have been approved. Next, we'll move on to communications. Do we have any council members who have communications they would like to share this evening? Yes, council member swing.
I received one last week. I can't remember if it was before Thanksgiving or after. Too much turkey. It was from a longtime resident of Athens who was called upon by a developer in regards to a possible apartment complex that we'll be discussing next week at committee meeting. And I think all members of council got that. It's in the second ward, I believe. And there were some concerns expressed, which hopefully we'll have a chance to delve into next Monday, but it was a very well-written and very thought-out email expressing citizen concern, which we will respond to next week.
I appreciate that. Also, on the topic of potential items for next week's discussion, I will share as our liaison to our Commission on Disabilities that President of Council and I and our mayor have received from our Commission on Disabilities, a couple of ordinances that they would like council to consider regarding ADA improvements for the city of Athens. I intend to share their proposed ordinances in language with council members in advance of our finalization of our committee meeting agenda, so that folks will have the opportunity to review that. And that would potentially be on our committee meeting for a week from today, pending our permanent president's approval. Do we have any other council members with communications to share at this time? Then I would like to extend a special invitation to Athens poet laureate Stephanie Kendrick, who has kindly joined us with a willingness to share a love letter to Athens. Stephanie, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and sharing a little bit about your poem, that would be amazing.
Yeah, thank you so much, Micah. I appreciate it. So Stephanie Kendrick, your poet laureate. I get to do really fun stuff, like come to council meetings and read poems. I gave all of you a newsletter, which is one of the projects that I do as your poet laureate. Every couple of months, I'll put one of these out. I will write a poem honoring a person or a business, an organization that's done some really great work in our area. On the last, on the back here, you'll see I feature a local or a regional poet every time. Al Rousey, you can catch him at Donkey Playing Music or at one of our open mics. And then we have Bonnie Proudfoot writing these beautiful book reviews in the issues. And so it's a pet project of mine that I'm really fortunate to get to do. And another thing is that sometimes people will contact me and ask me to write poetry for their events. And that's what happened when Lacey Rogers was putting on this kind of welcome event for the city of Athens that was at the Athens Middle School in October. And it was so easy to write a love poem about Athens. And so that's what I'm going to share here with you today. An ode to Athens, Ohio. I should say, when Micah heard this poem, I got really ambitious and I read the entire thing from memory. It's been a long day. I will not try that again. I do not trust myself. So I'll just read it from the newsletter. An ode to Athens, Ohio. Anchored firm with red clay, this city whispers across borders. Sprouts wherever her people scatter. This city sprawls across native land. Her trees root in taken dirt once touched by Osage, Hopewell, Adina, Shauni. This city remembers her history. Now opens her doors, a beckoning, a please come in. Our coffee is strong. There is a place for you here. This city, murals rainbow every blank space. Look at how we love this city. The labor that builds her, fruit that feeds her people, the children she will protect. And we, a micro melting pot. Appalachian, Afro-Latinian, Midwest, scholar, blue collar. All of us have that dirt deep under our fingernails. We breathe the same dust from brick-cobbled streets, find common ground in our opinions on sidewalk repairs. This city knows how to survive. She loves a good vibe. This city keeps disco alive. Hangs poems in her theater. Will feed you jerk chicken and sticky plantains. Will feed you farm-to-table cheap. Will feed you farm-to-table bougie. Will feed you chili ten different ways. And did I mention, this city will feed you? This city creates jewelry from seeds and spoons and bones, twig baskets, sourdough. Even the path of our river was shaped with our hands. Yes, this city knows of flood, of how to forge space. She holds things she doesn't get to erase. This city learns from her mistakes. She stays fertile with forests and farms, keeps it funky with DJs and ghosts. She will keep you on your toes. Rugged with hills once hollowed, this city is full of passion and love. And did I mention, this city, she will feed you? Thank you. I do want to say, we probably won't hang out for the rest of council, but I just have to say how much I and so many people appreciate that this council supports the local art scene. Just having a poet laureate is a really huge deal. A lot of cities, especially in our area, do not cultivate the arts in that way. We see firsthand, every single month, new people coming to the open mic that I'm able to host through this position. Children getting up and reading their poems for the first time. We have, we have people who are in their 90s reading their poems and students meeting counties and building those relationships. And it's really, really special. And so I just want to say how much I appreciate this council and this city for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could acknowledge not only Stephanie, but also the past Athens poet laureates and the work of the Athens Municipal Arts Commission. We appreciate how you help us keep arts an essential part of Athens. Thank you. Do we have any final communications? If not, we'll move on. Oh, sorry. Yes. Reports and communications from administration?
Thank you, President Proton McCary. I would like to announce on behalf of the city administration that the county has granted the expedited annexation petition for Cable Lane. So that releases the approximately 34.874 acres for annexation in the city. The petition is available for viewing in the council office now for 60 days. And then after that 60-day period, it will be presented to council for official annexation into the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Crowell. Communications and reports from other administrators or Law Director Reisen?
No.
Treasurer Thomas? And if we have no additional reports or communications, we now move on to ordinances for third reading. I will read the title and introduce the council member to complete the reading and provide any additional information. First, we have ordinance 113-24, an ordinance amending the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23, introduced by council member Reisner. Do we have a member of the Finance Committee who is willing to read this ordinance for the third time in the absence of Member Reisner?
If I can get to it, I will.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. I'll read it if you like.
So on behalf of Member Reisner, Member Claude Felder will read ordinance 113-24 for the third time.
An ordinance amending the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, Section 1. The 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums needed for the 2024 medical fund and personnel costs. And there's quite a list of them here. $20,000 to General Fund Auditor, 101.102, transaction code 100. $20,000 to the General Fund Law Director, 101.104, transaction code 100. $11,000 to General Fund Counsel, 101-1.105, transaction code 100. $12,000 to General Fund Land and Buildings, 101.112. $30,000 to General Fund Police, 101.207. $150,000 to General Fund Fire, 101.208. $11,000 to General Fund Parking Enforcement, 101.718. $6,000 to Cemetery Fund, 210.115. $51,000 to Street Fund, 220.717. $110,000 to Community Center Operations Fund, 271.940. $75,000 to Water Fund Plant, 740.637. $105,000, excuse me, $1,500 to Sewer Fund Maintenance, 750.635. $30,000 to Sewer Fund Plant, 750.637. $8,000 to Stormwater Environmental Coordinator Fund, 755.637. And $5,000 to Sanitation Fund, 760, and increasing the total appropriations by said amounts. This is section two. This ordinance shall be in effect in full force upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
Thank you, Member Claude Felder. If we could have a motion for this ordinance?
I move.
And can we have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion? Seeing no indication of discussion, we are ready for a vote on ordinance 113-24. All in favor of adopting the ordinance, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate so by saying nay. All right, the ordinance passes. It's been approved. Next, we have ordinance 115-24, an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Athens, Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. That is chaired by Member Reisner. And in his absence, do we have anyone who's willing to read this ordinance for the third time?
I am, but I can't imagine you want me to read every line.
I think just maybe section one would be...
Okay. Section one, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, State of Ohio, that to provide for the current expenditures of the said city of Athens during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025. The following sums be, and they are hereby set aside and appropriated as follows. Section two, that there be appropriated from the following funds. And then there is a long list of funds and the amounts that they're going to be getting that I think will be viewable to the public on the city council website.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think you'd much rather read it than have me read it aloud to you.
It is indeed currently part of tonight's packet that folks can find on the website. And we would just need a motion and a second before we invite discussion of this item. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Perfect. Discussion on our budget for the 2025 year. Member Swink.
Thank you, sir. As you said, this is our proposed budget for 2025. Wow, that's hard to believe. I have to admit, this is a third reading. And we may not, we may have done this last year, we may have not, but this may be the only time I've ever considered voting on a budget when half of it was missing. These are expenditures. What has been proposed and how much we will spend in the various categories. That's half of it. The half of it that's missing is the revenue side. In our personal finances, we'd all like to go back 25 years ago to Disney World, but our checkbook might not, might not allow that. And unlike individuals who can go get a Visa card or something and charge it and pay it forward later, the city can't do that. So I have several questions. What is our projected revenue for 2025? How much will we carry over from 2024? And when you combine those two figures, how much we will carry over from 2024 and what we project to raise in 2025? How much will we carry over to 2026? So I just find it kind of odd. We're voting to spend money when we don't know how much we have.
Appreciate those questions.
So I would... Like, oh, God, in that movie. I would be... If anybody has answers not to the buzz, but if anybody has answers to those questions, I would love, love to hear it in the night because I think it would make for a more informed vote by the five members of council who have gathered here this evening.
I appreciate those questions, as well as any additional questions folks may have. If people do have information that can provide responses tonight, that's excellent. Otherwise, we may need to wait for a response from our auditor, which raises the question of necessity of approving the budget to vote tonight. I believe, and I'll ask our clerk or law director to correct me if I'm wrong, but in the event that we were not prepared to vote on the proposed 2025 budget this evening, we would be able to table it, request additional information, and if there are no amendments made, return to the approval at third reading. Is that correct? Okay, all right. Let's invite additional questions and comments about this item. Member Thomas?
This is the exact same ordinance we did last year. I didn't, I was not here last year. It's the same ordinance we do every year. This is just what you anticipate spending and you can't really predict your revenue 100%. But this is, from what I've seen, a pretty standard budget ordinance. And it's not unlike any, it's, it's similar to budgets on other boards that I've been on, but I don't really... I don't know how this didn't come up in two previous readings and two committee meetings if this was so urgent.
Uh, Member Swink?
Wasn't a matter of urgent. I just figured it would eventually be presented to us as we got closer to the end of the year and those in charge of our finances would have a better ability to more accurately project.
It may indeed be that the additional information could be made available. It's also the case that the council can make amendments to the budget at a later date. And that could be done through introducing a motion to amend, make additional appropriations, or just through the practice of your vote this evening. Member Swink?
Yeah, I have no doubt that the administration exercised due diligence in putting this together, including our finance chair from council. No doubt in my mind that they think this is what we need. But when we take an oath, one of the things we swear to uphold is the protection of the taxpayer's purse. And without having that bit of information, I'm a little uncomfortable voting for this. I don't want to vote against it. Prefer not to vote against it. I guess I would prefer to be able to ask the auditor when she returns from her trip for what those rough numbers are. And then we can exercise a vote. And most likely, I would say for this, for this, for this thing. One of the things we asked last year, and so may you remember this, was to get this information in two forms, earlier and more complete. We got neither this year. We go back and look at the tapes. We're acting on this year-to-date at the same time. And we didn't get the other half, the revenue side. Because later today, we're going to be asking to move an income tax forward. We don't even know how much money we have. How can we legitimately ask for an income tax increase? These are the things I'm hearing from the public. So I guess what I would like to do is, we're more than likely, Clerk Walker, having a special session next week? I would like to put this off till next week, till we can hear the revenue figures, and then we could vote at that time. That's what I would prefer to do.
Thank you, Member Swink. I can share similarly that I did receive inquiries from our Commission on Disabilities regarding their request to see the city finance in a grant program to support businesses that wish to make ADA improvements. And they have asked for clarification about how much money their commission and other commissions will receive. And I do not believe we have information at that level of detail that I was able to find. Is there any other information about the 2025 budget that council members were hoping to have additional or are interested in having additional information on? Members, feel nice?
Yeah, we, last year, we did ask for this kind of information. Again, as Swink mentioned. And we're given a rather beautiful bit of information. Very well laid out after requested it. So I was hoping we would see the same kind of thing this year.
Uh, Member Claude Felder?
If possible, I would appreciate it if the auditor's office or the treasurer's office could give us a little insight into how much money, if any, will be carried forward to 2025. I don't know at what point in December or even January that will be known, but if we could have a little insight into it, that would be helpful.
I can just say, I can't give you that number. I don't have that number. From a historical standpoint, you've never voted on revenue, ever, in the city of Athens. It's not something that gets voted on. You can't vote on something that you don't know. Revenue can be projected and hoped for, but you cannot know what's going to happen revenue-wise coming in. What you're voting on is something that the administration can have a better handle on. We know what everybody's salary is going to be, right? That's a given. We know what certain costs are going to be, electric costs. We can certainly figure that up. There's, from historical data, we can do all that. But you can't really predict revenue. Think about running a business, a grocery store, right? You think you know what tomorrow's going to bring until it's a level three, and then you don't get it. So revenue is not something that's ever been voted on by council. It's just a matter of knowing these numbers. When you look at this budget, I think this has been brought up more than once now. When you look at this budget, I have both last year's and this year's in front of me. You know, your total, total budget for the year going into 2024 was 60... My god, I don't have my glasses, and I apologize for that. 65 million. This year, you're looking at 53 million. So obviously, there's been a lot of reductions in various areas for various reasons. The only thing that's ever been increased was personnel. We knew that already. We've discussed that like weeks. We've had, we've had this conversation. But again, I will, I will say that last year, again, I sat here last year and I do remember the same conversation. And revenue is not something that's ever been voted on by council because you can't vote on something you don't really know, if that makes sense.
While we have you, do you have any other responses to questions that have come up about the budget tonight that may otherwise be directed to the auditor?
Not particularly. I don't have, I cannot speak for the auditor in terms of revenue projections or in terms of the carryover. That's not, that's not really my department.
You happen to know where the funds from, that go toward commissions are stored? Are those within the mayor's budget?
So those would be... Sam, you know? It's in here, it's in here somewhere. I'm going to assume, Members Fieldness, that you're talking about the spreadsheet that was set last year, and you don't have that this year, I assume. Okay. Okay.
Members Spillness?
Yeah, I, I just want to say that we know you can't completely know the revenue. Right. And, and of course, we can't vote on revenue. That's not up to us, and nobody's asking for that. But, um, it's helpful to get some projection.
Sure.
Uh, for example, you know, you have a rough idea of how many apartments there are, so you know pretty much how many permit fees, what the permit fees dollars are. So that's at least a pretty rough projection. So I mean, that's one example, and certainly there are, there are more. So that's the kind of thing, again, we don't know if you're going to get a grant sometimes, you know, of course, uh, but you have been very successful. So we understand that that's kind of wishful thinking, but, you know, whatever. But still, I don't think it's unreasonable to look at what the projections, and knowing that they're rough, and then seeing how this fits with that. And I think that's really the question. Again, we, I, I think it's just something that's helpful for us to be respectful of our taxpayers, to show them that kind of dollars before we make sure we are comfortable.
Okay.
Do we have any, oh, yes, member Thomas?
Just really kind of a thought. Um, I understand wanting to know the revenue and having an idea, but are you expecting that our personnel costs, our land costs, our utilities costs, our medical costs and our standard costs are going to be less based on that? Because some of those are not going to go down ever unless you decide to cut staff or start paying people less. So what we're voting on here are things they know are going to cost up to this amount. Unless you cut staff or you pay people less, you're not going to, or stop paying your electrical bill, I guess, but, you know, they're not budgeting in as far as you can see. I mean, a lot of frivolous, random things, but that's ju- just a, a thought that doesn't matter what your revenue is, you're still going to have to pay your personnel. You're still going to have to pay your medical costs, and that's what we're looking, what we're looking at. You know, we have street costs in here. We have, you know, we can see all the funds, you know, all the departments and what they're spending and, and whatnot. I think if, to do it exactly the way it seems like you're asking is rewriting and redoing the entire structure for budgeting for the city, and I guess I'd like to see some examples of other cities and how they do it that way, the way you want it done.
I will do, uh, member Swink, and then back to our treasurer.
There are two columns under general fund, and I'm not asking to redo anything. All I'm asking is for someone to show me we have the money, period. I think that's a simple request. Yes, there are personnel costs, and we're locked into those by where people are placed based on years of service, union contracts and the like. We also have $3.7 million in supplies and services. We also have $303,000 in capital outlay. Perhaps we don't buy a computer every year, one year. There are lots of places in here where there are discretionary funds, wants, that are built in. Personnel costs fall under the category of needs. You have to have those things. All I'm asking is I'd like, last year, the spreadsheet we saw, to see the revenue. We have two more meetings on which to vote on this. Mr. Chair, I would move that we table this approval of the budget until next meeting on, what's that, December the 9th? Still be a third reading.
I appreciate that, just checking procedurally. I intended to go to, uh, the treasurer before we took a motion to table or to vote. Um, is there anything wrong with going to the treasurer at this time before we?
Well, you can get a second and then have discussion on it.
So we do have a motion on the table, the table, uh, and I have not heard a second.
I'll second.
Right.
And you could go to the treasurer.
Treasurer Thomas?
All I would just make to the point is, is, I understand where you're coming from. You want to be good stewards of the city's money. This, this budget, this...
Wait, wait, wait. The point of order, the question on the floor is to table or not?
It is.
Yes.
This would be relevant.
Okay, please do, chair.
Yeah. I mean, to, to, to your point, the, the point of, the point of this budget, just because something isn't a column, doesn't mean it's already spent. It's not, we're not writing that check on January 1st. This is money that's budgeted for the entire year. So in terms of when you say being good steward to the city's money, that's the administration's goal as well. So let's just say we do get to June and funds are tight, then I, procedurally, I, I mean, I'm fairly new here, but I still think I understand all those words, is procedurally, then that's when the administration would come back to you and say, listen, we are in a pinch, you know? The revenue isn't coming in as projected, even if, so, just to give you an idea, how about I say, hey, member Swink, the revenue is exactly what you need, done. But then I come back to you, and maybe that's my best projection, but I come back to you in June and say, I was wrong. We did have level three days or whatever. Well, now we're wrong. So procedurally, the way this works is then we would come back and say, now we are in this position, and we now may need to, you're right, we're not going to buy any more computers the rest of the year. We're not renovating any offices, we're not doing any of this and that. I can be honest in saying, in our Tuesday meetings, these are discussions that have come up a little bit, like, will there be a time that we're going to have to do that? So again, I guess what I'm saying is, the budget is what it is. This is the projection on the expenses. If the year comes around and we'll, I'm, I'm sure the auditor would do her absolute best, as she does every year for the last 20 years, to project the revenue to the best of her ability. But if you come to a month that we determine the revenue is getting tight, um, I mean, let's, let's look at last year. Do you remember we came to council and we said, uh, 270, the community center, we needed to move some money into that, right? Because our revenue, we, it just didn't work out the way that we hoped it did. So we had to make some adjustments, and that's how the budgeting works. So your concerns are valid, but I think the process is already in place to take care of that. As the year rolls along, if, if changes have to be made, then changes get made, and I think everybody in the administration is on board with that, knowing like, we're not going to run the city into the ground. That's not going to happen, you know, that we would have to make the necessary changes. That's, that's to the best of my, as, as when we talk about all of these things in meetings, that's how it, it seems to play out, is, you know, that's how it works. So I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I wouldn't, you could table till next week. I'm not, I'm not sure the auditor is going to be able to come in here and give you a magic number next week. I'm not, if the auditor was sitting here, I think she would say that to you, that, uh, she might not be able to come in and give you the magic number that makes you feel perfectly comfortable. But we can give you the assurance that if we get uncomfortable, then again, we'll make the changes that we have to make.
Member Swink?
I agree with you 100%. For the benefit of the public, some number is better than no number, particularly when we're going to be asking for an income tax increase. Part of this has to do with transparency and trust.
Sure.
And by no means am I implying that anyone is being anything but diligent in what they're doing, but again, some number is better than none.
I will ask the treasurer on this topic of tabling. Uh, are you aware of any challenges that would present to the administration to have the budget voted on next week instead of this week?
I am not, but again, I, I wouldn't want to speak for everybody else. I can't, I cannot do that.
Is anyone aware of any difficulties that that would cause? Members Spillness?
If I recall last year, and maybe Debbie knows this better than I do, but, um, I recall that we didn't have to have a budget in place, is my understanding.
True.
Until next year. So my, under my, unless something's changed, it's not going to hurt anybody to wait.
Do we have any additional discussion on the topic of tabling the budget? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Member Thomas?
So if it's not to the satisfaction next week, is it going to get tabled again?
What do you make?
They were able to provide that really quickly when we asked last year, really quickly.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. I believe we've heard discussion from everyone perhaps but the public. Uh, did we have any public commentary before we vote on tabling this? Then we have a motion and a second, all in favor of tabling. This is ordinance 115-24. Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, nay.
That's nay.
Uh, for clarification, can we have hands, ayes? Or ayes, and can we have nays? All right, we have four in favor of tabling, so we will accept that motion to table, and ordinance 115-24 has been tabled. Next, we have ordinance, ordinance-116-24, an ordinance authorizing the 2025 non-union compensation, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith, and declaring an emergency introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Uh, do we have anyone who would be willing to read this ordinance for the third time?
I would be willing.
Thank you, member Claude Fetter.
You're, you're welcome. Uh, so section one, effective January 1st, 2025, the fringe benefits package attached heretofore and incorporated herein shall be in effect, and all ordinances inconsistent therewith shall be repealed. Section two, this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, safety and welfare of the residents of the city of Athens in order to meet the January 1st, 2025 effective date, and that it shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor. And then there are many pages of information, uh, some of which have edits in red ink that will be available to view on the city website. Some of those changes have previously been discussed here at, uh, city council committee meetings and in previous meetings.
Yes, um, acting mayor Crowell.
I believe member Claude Fetter has jumped to the next ordinance. We're looking at 116.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Am I correct as counsel?
That's right.
Yes, 116-24. So we are... Yes, that should be in everyone's packet, although my page is, oh, there it is, yes. Uh, so...
Here's mine.
We are...
Thank you. Okay.
Able to accept a motion and a second if we have them.
Well, we, she hasn't read 116.
Oh, oh, please do.
She's in the midst of reading 117.
Please do.
Just set that aside for a moment.
And we'll go back to the beginning of 116-24, please.
Okay. Section one, pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 731-08, power of legislated authority as to salaries and bonds, and the city of Athens' non-union fringe benefits, city council does hereby authorize a 2025 general hourly pay increase for full-time and permanent part-time, non-union employees, as attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. Non-union employees in a probationary status shall not be eligible for any general hourly pay increase. Section two, city council does hereby authorize a one-time lump sum payment to those employees whose general hourly pay rate exceeds or will exceed the maximum pay rate in their pay grade, as attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. Said hourly pay increases or lump sum payment shall be effective the first pay period of 2025. Section three, this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, safety and welfare of the residents of the city of Athens in order to maintain fiscal integrity, and that it shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
Thank you, member Claude Fetter. Uh, now we could accept a motion to adopt 116-24.
So moved.
Second. I'd like to make a comment, though.
Yes.
Since we tabled, uh, I don't know how we can go forward with these if we've tabled the actual financial part.
That's a good question.
Does this mean that they would all have to be moved to our meeting, our special meeting?
We don't have, um, we don't have the budget in place that's been tabled.
Which would delay our ability to vote on 116 and 117, is that correct?
116 and 1, yes. I, I believe it does because you don't have the money situation in place, so...
And...
If we don't have any money, I don't know how we can, uh, have the fringe benefits and, um, well, let me look at the fringe benefits just closely. One moment.
While the law director looks that up, uh, member Swink?
Uh, law director Lyson, we've already approved the union contracts for police and/or fire for next year.
We have.
Would that allow us to approve these in addition then, without the budget being voted on?
The fringe benefit package, uh, that has some financial, um, it has to do with sick leave, um, other types of leaves. Could I see the 116? Certainly, thanks. 116 is definitely non-union compensation. We're bound by the union. Here, the non-union really depends on approving the budget. So I think that this one has to be tabled. I'm not sure that the fringe benefits, but that probably has to be tabled also since you're, um, since we're talking about compensation.
I'm hearing from the law director that there may be a procedural necessity at this point to table ordinances 116 and 117 as a result of having tabled ordinance 115-24 today. Member Swink?
Do we, uh, law director, can we do these all together, or do we have to do them one at a time?
We have to do each one separately.
Okay, I would, uh, I would move that we table 116-24 until next, uh, Monday.
We've had a motion to table 116.
Second.
We have a second discussion from council members. Uh, acting mayor Crowell, do you have any comment on tabling 116?
I do not.
Um, treasurer Thomas? Law director Lyson?
No.
Members of the public. All right, we've had a motion and a second. We are now ready to vote on tabling 116-24, an ordinance authorizing the 2025 non-union, non-union compensation, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith, and declaring an emergency originally introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. We will now vote on that tabling. If you are in favor, please indicate so with an aye.
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 We see a hand on.
With hands? And can we have any nays? Okay.
So that was four and one.
All right, with that, ordinance 116-24 is tabled. We will now move on to ordinance 117-24, an ordinance adopting a fringe benefit package for non-union personnel within the city of Athens and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith, and declaring an emergency introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
And it's my opinion, this should be tabled also.
Appreciate that. Uh, comments from other, from council members on tabling? Acting mayor Crowell, any comments on tabling 1-17-24? Member treasurer Thomas? Okay, members of the public? All right, we will take a vote on, oh, we need a motion, yes. And then I'll accept a motion to...
I move that we table, um, this ordinance 117.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we've had a first and second, all in favor of tabling 117-24. Please raise your hand and indicate so by saying aye.
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 Again, that's four.
Yes, and can we see opposed with a nay?
Nay.
Thank you. Uh, with that, the ordinance 117-24 has been tabled for the evening. Next, I have ordinance 118-24, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into or to extend the agreement with the Board of the Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office through December 31st, 2025, introduced by council member Reisner. Do we have anyone?
Another financial matter.
Yeah.
Uh, would anyone like to make a motion regarding ordinance 118-24?
I'd like to hear from Lisa first.
Another financial matter. This is $120,000 through the end of December 31st of 2025. So I think this one has to be tabled also.
We have a recommendation from the law director to table, but we would require a motion and a second from council.
I move that we table 118-24.
Thank you, member Spillness. Do I have a second? I believe I'm allowed a second, uh, and then take it to a vote. Oh, wait, no, I first need to invite discussion on tabling 118-24. We've heard comment from the law director, comments from other council members. Acting mayor Crowell, treasurer, public, all right, all in favor of tabling ordinance 118-24? Please raise your hand and indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I see four, but by, uh, comparison, can we formally have nays with hands? We have one nay. With that, ordinance 118-24 has been tabled. With that, ordinance 118-24 has been tabled for the evening. Moving us to ordinance 119-24, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, code fees established to include Sections 23.03.11D and accessory structures and accessory energy systems, and 23.03.12B, principal renewable energy systems, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
This is a non-financial ordinance for the city. We've talked about this at length. I'll read the two sections, they're very short, effective January 1st, 2025, Athens City Code Title I, General Provisions. It's hereby amended to read as follows. Accessory structures and accessory energy systems, permit $100 plus $100... $1.50 per $1,000 of improvement or portion thereof. And then principal renewable energy systems, permit fees $150 for roof-mounted residential solar. Basically, these are permitting fees that take into account, in the first instance, the value of the increase in property value, the second, a permit fee for inspection and the like. I would move that council pass 119-24.
So moved.
Uh, or I think...
Or you moved, sorry, seconded.
Seconded, thank you. All right. Member Thomas is seconded. Do we have discussion from other council members? Acting Mayor. Treasurer? Law Director?
No.
Public. All right. We've had a motion and a second for adopting ordinance 119-24. All those in favor, please raise your hand and indicate so by saying "aye."
Aye.
And all opposed, nay? Okay, we are in agreement with consensus, and with that, ordinance 119-24 has been adopted. We now have ordinances for second reading, for which I will read the title and pause for any discussion. If there is none, I'll move on to the next. Ordinance 112-24, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement to provide financial support from the city's transient guest tax for the operation of the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, ORCA, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance... Oh, oh, yes.
After talking with Auditor Heck, I'd like to offer an amendment on this. Just gonna have to read from the email if you can, or if I can. She says, "Up to council to vote on that change, and I can live with it. However, my worry now is that I think it should go back up for the future, the 8% to the 9%. Next year, we will be going through the process of refinancing our pool bond to get a better deal. We can do that after 10 years. Our cash reserve balance will definitely be part of the process when getting our bond rating reviewed." After consulting with Auditor Heck and Law Director Eliason, I would like to propose the following amendment. Right now, we... Let's get to the right page here. The second part of this... Well, I'll just read the whole thing. "The mayor is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement to provide financial support from the city's transient guest tax paid in the general fund of the Outdoor Recreation Council Appalachia Regional Council of Governments for the operation of ORCA, provided the proceeds of such taxes efficiently available lawfully appropriate for purpose, and the city's general fund reserve balance is 8% or higher." We changed that previously. And here's the change. "For the year 2024, thereafter, the reserve balance shall be 9% or higher." Further direction and comments of the city auditor, like to see it go back to 9%. However, realizing that we have made the commitment for this year, we've already agreed on the 8% as a group, that would take care of this year of obligation, and then next year we'll go back. The overriding thing, as she said in her email, we're going to hopefully refinance the bonds for the pool and save some money, and therefore the 9% will look better for bond ratings than 8%, considering our... What is it? Range is what, 6 to 15? So I so move that we make that amendment.
Do we have a second for this amendment?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Comments from the administration, Acting President Crowell, Law Director Eliason? Any comment on this amendment? And Treasurer, public? All right, we're ready to vote on the amendment, and that is for ordinance 1-12-24. All in favor of amending, as indicated by Member Swank, with the input of Auditor Heck, please indicate by saying "aye."
Aye.
And do we have any opposed? Please say "nay." All right, with that, we have amended ordinance 112-24. Moving on... Oh, yes. I believe so. That means we would need a... Ooh, that's gonna be tough.
We have two more... We have...
Oh, no, we will be good. Okay, great.
Second reading next week. We have a special session before next week.
I think concern would just be making sure it gets paid by the end of the year.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Hopeful note.
Only $24,000.
Member Thomas.
So along those lines, does it need to include the emergency clause, so it doesn't have to wait the 30 days?
I would think so. So is that an additional amendment that we need to verbalize now?
We can do that next week.
Okay.
Or when you're gonna suspend the rules.
All right. Looks like... Do we have a comment from the public on this amendment? Let's go ahead and hear from the...
Member Swank had a question.
Oh, Member Swank, and then we'll go to the public, yeah.
While I agree with Law Director Eliason, at the risk of being the situation we're in tonight with only five members, I would prefer to go ahead and make that amendment this evening that was pointed out. You know, never know, snowstorms, COVID.
All right.
Somebody hits the lottery.
But currently, we are discussing... We don't have a motion on the table for this, a second...
We're just gonna make a second amendment tonight to add an emergency clause.
All right. And Mary, did you have something first before we get to that?
It's not on the amendment, but just a question. In the past, I haven't heard the amount discussed, and in the past, it has been $90,000. And I believe, if what I read in the newspaper is accurate, that this amount is now around $24,000, and so that is a decrease of about $66,000. And I just say that because I think those are things that the public might be interested in, to know how much is this amount. So is that correct?
I recall it being significantly less around that amount, but is that the exact...
24.6 something or other.
There it is, $24,673 for 2024. And I do appreciate that, because it is a significant reduction in our prior contribution to ORCA.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we are back to the motion for a additional amendment to add an emergency clause to ordinance 1... 12.
112-24.
24.
Director Eliason, is there specific wording we need for this?
Just the standard wording for the emergency clause.
So I move... I so move that we add the standard wording for the emergency clause to 112-24. I'll defer to Clerk Walker's to that wording.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend with the addition of an emergency clause. All in favor, please indicate so by saying "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed by saying "nay"? All right, with that, we have amended ordinance 112-24 for the second time this evening. Now continuing on with second readings. Ordinance 120-24, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract extension to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Economic Development Council, and declaring an emergency introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Next, we have ordinance 121-24, an ordinance authorizing 2025 staffing levels, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith, and declaring an emergency introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Ordinance 122-24, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with the Employee Benefit Service Center to serve as the city's third-party health insurance administrator, and declaring an emergency introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 123-24, an ordinance authorizing a group excess loss medical insurance contract, and declaring an emergency introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 124-24, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a one-year agreement with the Sunday Creek Horizons Consulting Firm, introduced by Councilmember Swank. Ordinance 125-24, an ordinance authorizing disposal of vehicles no longer needed for municipal purpose, introduced by Councilmember Spillness. Ordinance 126-24, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title V, Public Utilities, Chapter 5.03, Water Regulations, Section 5.03.03, Wasted Water Charged For, and Title I, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established, introduced by Councilmember McCary. Ordinance 127-24, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract to lease or otherwise monetize the city's solar renewable energy credits, SFRX, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. I believe that is our last one for second reading. Moving on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 128-24, an ordinance to provide for an increase in the general city income tax of 30 hundredths of a percent, point three... 30 hundredths of a percent per annum, beginning January 1st, 2026, authorizing the question of the increase to be placed on the ballot at the next primary election to be held on May 6th, 2025, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Do we have a member of that committee who is able to read 128-24 for the first time?
I can read it.
Thank you, Member Claude Felder.
Section one. Upon passage by a majority of the electors of the city of Athens, Title 17 of the Athens City Code of ordinances shall be hereby amended to provide for city income tax and 2 and 25 one hundredths of a percent, 2.25% annually, effective January 1st, 2026, for a total of 2... 2.25% per annum, rather than the current 1.95% per annum. Section two. The .3% increase in general tax imposed by this ordinance will provide for a total of 2.25% tax per annum, rather than the current 1.95 tax per annum, and shall be levied, collected, and paid with respect to all income as defined in Athens City Code, Chapter 17.01, subject to the tax earned on and after January 1st, 2026. Section three, this ordinance shall be placed on the ballot at the primary election to be held on May 6th, 2025, and shall be subject to the approval of a majority of the electors. Section four, in the event then that less than a majority of the electors vote to approve the .3% tax increase to be imposed January 1st, 2026, as authorized herein, the present 1.95% income tax rate shall remain in full force and effect as if the election had not occurred. Section five, the clerk of council is hereby directed to file a certified copy of this ordinance at least 90 days before May 6th, 2025, with the Athens County Board of Elections pursuant to Section 718.01 of the Ohio Revised Code. And section six, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
Thank you, Member Claude Felder. Do we have discussion in addition to this first reading? Member Swank.
After council had discussion tonight, I had planned to possibly offer an amendment to this, but with the Chair of the Council Finance Committee absent, and none of the members of the administration or the auditor, I think it would be best to hold that conversation next week and that possible amendment. I will say this, though, in talking to many, many, many citizens about this, the impression I'm getting that this is going to be a very, very heavy lift, because it's very different than what people are used to having voted on. If you build a fire station, it's a bond issue for a tangible object that's gonna last many, many years, and you're voting on that building. Similarly, a pool, or a rec center, or if it's a school bond issue, a brand-new high school, and people can see that. But this is just for money. And while it's a tax increase, I actually had somebody say to me, unless I get a raise this year, this is gonna be a pay cut. I'd never thought of it that way. But for those who are not guaranteed annual pay raises, in essence, that's what it would be. But again, without the auditor and the mayor and/or city safety director and the Chair of our Finance Committee, I think the discussion would best be held next week, and whether or not an amendment's offered will depend on that discussion and the will of council. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Swank. Do we have other council members with comment on this first reading at this time? Members of the administration? Okay. Members of the public? All right. The ordinance has been read for the first time. Ordinance 129-24, an ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce 2024 year-end appropriations, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Member Claude Felder, would you do the honors? Thank you.
"Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, Section One, the auditor is hereby authorized to reduce the 2024 appropriations where anticipated receipts are not adequate and, when combined with the carryforward balance, not sufficient to approve the full appropriation of funds. And section two, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law upon its passage and approval by the mayor."
Do we have any comments or questions on this first reading? Treasurer?
Yeah, I would just throw in that this is what I've spoken of.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, here we are in December, and the auditor's office is saying there might be a few areas where the revenue wasn't sufficient, so we need to reduce those appropriations. This is the process. That's all I'm gonna say.
Yeah, appreciate that. All right, seeing no other comments, then we have completed the first reading for ordinance 129-24. Next is ordinance 130-24, an ordinance authorizing a water line replacement on Factory Street, introduced by Councilmember McCary. I will read... Whereas this water line was designed as an alternate bid for the Ohio University HCom Building, and whereas this 10-inch water line connection on Factory Street will connect the 12-inch line on West Union Street to the 14-inch line that runs through the Ohio University Central Plant Complex and serves the south side of the city. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, Section One, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $222,000 from the 2025 budget, water fund maintenance, 740.635, for said water line replacement on Factory Street. Section two reads that this ordinance shall be in effect in full force upon its passage and approval by the mayor. This was discussed in committee and has now been read for the first time. Do we have any comments? Ordinance 131-24, an ordinance declaring a real and present emergency, thus obviating the formal bidding procedure to proceed with the replacement of the ADA ramps at all four corners of the Court and Union Street intersections, as well as replacement of the crosswalks, introduced by Councilmember Spillness.
Yes, we did talk about this in committee. Thank you.
Thanks.
One of the things we talked about was suspending the rules to get this thing done, but apparently with only five of us, that's not procedurally acceptable. So we're gonna have to talk about that next week, apparently. And I had a couple of questions that I would like to have answers to, and one of them is how long is the project expected to take, and how will adjacent businesses be protected from lost customers during this process? I was hoping to get some answers about that before we went too far with this, but I will read the ordinance for you. An ordinance declaring a real and present emergency, thus obviating the formal bidding procedure to proceed with the replacement of the ADA ramps at all four corners of the Court Union Street intersection, as well as replacement of the crosswalks. Court-Union Street intersection, as well as replacement of the crosswalks. Whereas this project has already been bid three times as part of the Uptown Improvements Project with no bidder, and whereas the contractor currently working to fill in the voids under the sidewalk beside the Lostro Building in the city's right-of-way at this intersection is willing to proceed with the replacement of the ADA ramps and crosswalks during Ohio University's winter break, hence the need for haste, and whereas it is vitally important this uptown intersection be in compliance with ADA requirements. Be it ordained by the Council, Section 1, due to the need for immediate action to proceed with replacement ADA ramps at all four corners of Court and Union Street intersection, as well as replacement of the crosswalks with stamped concrete to resemble brick, the City of Athens hereby declares an emergency situation, et cetera. Section 2, the 2024 Appropriational Ordinance 130-23 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriate balance the sum of $200,000 to Street Fund 220, Transaction Code 500, and increasing the total appropriations by this amount. Section 3, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with M&amp;M Construction Company and to expend up to $200,000 from the Street Fund for said replacement of ADA ramps. Section 4, this ordinance will be emergency measure necessary for the preservation of health, safety, et cetera. Needless to say, perhaps, the Disabilities Commission is very much in favor of getting this done. I think the rest of us, whether we have a disability or not, would like to see that be a little smoother walking, and it's a nice entrance to our city, so we're hoping we get that done. But it's urgent, because obviously, university last week of classes for the semester is coming up, and they want to do this during that winter break when it's, according to those businesses we've spoken to, like Treasurer Thomas mentioned last week, that it would be nice to just get that done during that period when there's less business, so it's less intrusive for the businesses that are, that will be affected. But I would like to know that they have done some measures to protect the businesses as much as possible. So we're hoping next week we can do, suspend the rules.
Thank you, Member Spillness. We have now read for the first time. Did we have any additional comments on this ordinance?
There's one down there.
Yes.
I believe Dr. Stone said that he planned to maintain traffic one direction.
I know he was going to try and find a way.
Yeah, that he had that in his plans.
Did we receive, I know he was going to try and find a way, but did we receive any update that he was successful yet? I think he was still working on it the last.
Yeah, that's the impression I had.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sure it revolves some routing of coming all the way up to Court and coming Union to Court and whatnot, but yeah.
Appreciate council's commitment to supporting businesses if we can, yes.
Question to comment. I don't know what year it was. Perhaps Clerk Walker can tell us, but there was a previous council that passed something. Was it a resolution, an ordinance, about brick streets? And granted, it was a resolution, not an ordinance, but, you know, we've passed lots of resolutions the last three years, and I hope, we hope that they meant something. What bearing does that resolution have on this proposed action?
My understanding that there were a couple of pieces that were influencing that, the resolution that you're mentioning, as well as, I recall, Acting Mayor, normally President Crowell sharing with us that there was also an agreement reached as a kind of compromise between the Historic Preservation Society and the Disabilities Commission, indicating that an appropriate compromise might be to have these stamped concrete. Acting Mayor Crowell, can you recall that additional piece of information that you shared?
Sure. I have the resolution that Member Swank just spoke of in front of me. If you'd like to know some of the language in that, it is a resolution, as you indicated. Section 1 reads that the Service Safety Director is hereby requested to oversee and enforce a policy that would maintain and preserve the brick streets and alleys in the paths designated on the attached map. Those areas in the designated downtown that have slopes that would create a traffic hazard for present-day vehicles are exempted from the area. And it is basically our downtown area with Washington and Union and Park Place included. The Disabilities Commission, I brought this up with them when they were supporting the stamped concrete proposal for Union and Court Street, and this is going on a couple of years now. I believe it was in 2022 when they approached the Historic Preservation Commission to get their stance on having stamped concrete in that area rather than historic brick. And they provided me with the letter signed by both the Chair of the Historic Preservation Committee and the Disabilities Commission, where they agreed that in order to make that intersection as safe as possible, that stamped concrete was acceptable to the Historic Preservation Commission. And I can forward that to council if you'd like to have those documents.
Member Swank?
And I would agree with you 100% in terms of accessibility and safety. The only difference is, and again, it was a resolution. A resolution passed by an elected body versus a recommendation by an appointed body, and that they're vastly different. And I say that in the context of an email that I think we all got today. And reading through that email, the signatures on it, three really jumped out at me. Two well-respected former architects, retired architects, have done lots of business with the city, and the Chair of the City Planning Commission signed that letter. So I guess what I'm saying is, yes, safety, accessibility, A and A1, or A1 and A. But I think there's a conversation that needs to be had here as to what is truly the right thing to do. And Director Stone, you know, we talked about money, and I'm as, try to be as fiscally responsible as possible. This is going to be not only the quick way, but the cheap way to do it, where the other way is going to take a big toll on the city budget, and it's going to delay it at least a year, if not 2026. So I think there's a lot of conversation that we need to have here. I would hate, and we may not have an option in terms of voting, but I would hate for us to rush to the finish line without considering the resolution by an elected body. Again, it is a resolution. It's not binding, but it is a resolution and been on the books for a long, long, long time.
I don't recall if it's a resolution or an ordinance that council passed in support of adopting the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, but we do see references, as I mentioned in a recent meeting, for both goals of maintaining our brick aesthetic, but also improving ADA specifically around sidewalks. So there may indeed be different sources of council's sentiment and goals from different periods. Appreciate these comments, and we'll next go to Member Thomas.
So I have that email with the resolution that was sent to us in March, and that resolution's from 1990. So it's been a while. And while I respect, you know, the love of bricks and the history and everything else, I've also worked on that block for almost 30 years, and it's not easy to cross, and it's not easy to cross in walking in two healthy feet, let alone with any type of mobility. And we're not talking about tearing up all the streets. We're not talking about changing the aesthetic of the city. We're talking about making crosswalks accessible for people and mobility devices to cross them safely in all weather. And Members, or Director Stone did mention that there are ways, like he did Derry Lane with the asphalt and everything, that would take substantially more money and more time. So if we're also worrying about impact of business, that's shutting down an entire multi-block area, paving, bricking. I mean, Derry Lane took a very long time. And it's phenomenal, but it's also a flat area that doesn't have storm drainage. It doesn't have, it doesn't have, you know, the slope that Court Street has. There's a lot of impacts there. I really can't believe we have to discuss this much on whether or not we replace crosswalks to make them safe. I was out here last week, but I did watch the meeting, and I thought Jeff, or Member Reisner, put it really well when he said if we're talking about streets versus people and choosing people. I thought that was the best way to put it. It will impact businesses a little bit. This next, I mean, I don't, if we can get this passed in an emergency and do this as quickly as we'd like to, this is the least impactful time period to do it. There still will be some impact, but it's going to be better than, you know, trying to do it in the summer, trying to do it when people are visiting, during orientation month. Yeah. I can't imagine a better time period, even though it is going to be hard to do with limited members. I'm not sure how that actually will happen, but that's, those are just my thoughts on this.
I do believe those are helpful points, and Member Spillness, who may have already indicated this, but we have informed the Commission on Disabilities of public concern about losing any of our historic brick aesthetic, and it is still their desire to see us move forward with this project as quickly as possible. Do we have any other questions or comments, Member Swank?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a comment of Member Thomas and also Treasurer Thomas. There are people to this day still that, "I'm not going uptown because I have to pay to park." As crazy as that may sound, you've been in the business almost 30 years. Just out of curiosity, and I don't know the answer. I don't have a business uptown. I do business uptown, but I don't have a business uptown. Do you think if the council passed an ordinance that during this time period, that we waived the meter fees for that very short period of time, that might be an olive branch to encourage people? I know, you're both smiling.
We've talked about it a lot over the years. The very honest answer that no one ever loves is if you come up on a Sunday when there's no parking, it's full of parking, but there are no people. People just park, they go to church, they go to whatever. But this past Sunday, there were no students in town. It was still a holiday weekend, you know, given our calendar that we work around. Every spot on my block and the second block was full, and there were no people walking around. So it does become storage parking, it does become employee parking, it becomes a lot of parking. And we did the candy cane wrapping of meters for years to encourage people to come uptown and park for free in those meters. We've done street, you know, certain parking in the garage on Saturdays, and it's, there's plenty of parking. I understand not people saying they don't want to pay for parking, but you're really paying for it anywhere you go. You just don't pay it out of your pocket directly.
That's why I asked. I figured being in the business, you would know as well as anybody.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't, if we wanted to try it this year, this would be the year to try it, but yeah.
With one of the factors being considered being how businesses are impacted, I think it's relevant for that conversation to have happened during first reading, and hopefully if people have additional ideas about how we can move forward with these ADA improvements with minimal disruption to businesses, we'll continue to pursue that as a goal. Yes, please. Members of the public, if you'd come to the podium and prepare to introduce yourself, letting us know if you're speaking on behalf of yourself or an organization, we'll have up to three minutes to speak.
My name is Tim Traxler. I think I am the author of the letter that appeared in the news, all three newspapers, or the newspapers plus the Athens Independent. I've done a great deal of research on ADA compliance using brick and with stamped concrete or asphalt or what have you. And so I think I can speak on behalf of the 85 signatures that I gathered just in my normal course of the day. It wasn't, I didn't stand on a street corner, I didn't knock on doors to get signatures. This was just in the normal course of my day over a period of time. There were three architects, local architects, including a former Athens County planner, and also a university planner was also on that list of 85. I didn't have any trouble getting signatures. When they read the petition language, there was no problem. People want to be involved in this. They feel very strongly about their city and the city that they love. There's no question that the bricks of streets of Athens could have been better maintained over the last 100 years. All of a sudden, now we have a crisis to make this ADA compliant, and we have no issue with that at all. In downtown Columbus, all of the crosswalks on High Street are brick, clay brick, all ADA compliant. They're beautiful. So you don't have to have stamped concrete to have ADA compliant. You can do it with clay brick. And it's done all the time. I went to this Columbus City Street and Road Department, and they were all too happy to provide the specifications and drawings or whatever's needed to use a brick on the, for the crosswalks and to make them ADA compliant. They were eager to help me. So I didn't come here, plan to have any remarks. I think that my research, the letter that I placed in the paper, the 85 signatures that I collected from citizens who love their community, who have no problem with making the intersections on Court Street ADA compliant, and about the resolution that was formed, people made that in good faith. Probably there are many citizens involved in that. When I did live in the city, I participated in the city plan, and I know that there's always an emphasis on historic preservation, and that's not just about buildings, it's about the landscape altogether. Is that my time limit?
Yes, if you'd like to wrap up with a final sentence.
I'd like to wrap up. So if there is some discussion, further discussion, that Mr. Swank, I would like to be involved. I think those three architects would like to be involved, the two planners would like to be involved, and other members of the community. So again, we don't, I don't, this is an emergency, you might say, but those bricks were there, they haven't changed in the last couple of years, so all of a sudden, now it's an emergency. You know, it was an emergency a long time ago.
Thank you.
And so anyway, so I'd like to be a part of the discussion.
We appreciate you taking the time to provide all that information to council.
I'm open for anybody to ask any questions.
Thank you. I believe all members of council did receive that documentation, and we would have this ordinance up for a second reading a week from now, so if members of the public were interested in commenting on the importance of historic brick preservation or the importance of ADA as it pertains to this ordinance, attending next week's city council meeting special session would be appropriate. You may also email any council members or members of the administration if you have specific concerns. Do we have any other comments on this ordinance at this time? All right. Then ordinance 131-24 has been read for the first time, and we'll move on to ordinance 132-24, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.07 Administrative Departments, Boards and Commissions, Section 3.07.01, City Planning Commission, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
This ordinance 132-24 deals with the City Planning Commission, and what it does is simply bring our code 3.07.01 in compliance or same as the Ohio Revised Code. And I'll read it very quickly. A planning commission for the city consisting of the mayor, the service safety director, and two citizens of the municipal corporation, and one public member is established as provided in the Ohio Revised Code, Section 7103.13.01. The members of the commission shall be appointed, reappointed by the mayor for a term of six years and serve in accordance with and shall be subject to all the provisions of the Ohio Revised Code pertaining to the commission. We had a person ask about this second section last week, and again, this explains it very clearly. The public members appointed under this section need not be residents of the municipal corporation, but shall be residents of the county in which the municipal corporation is located or township that is adjacent to the county. So in other words, we went from three citizens to two living in the city, and now a third, which we had before, can be outside of the city. And again, this simply brings this in, makes it consistent with the Ohio Revised Code. And we have passed many, many ordinances this year as we've gone through the code, bringing code into compliance with the ORC.
Keep, Member Swank. Do we have any questions or comments about ordinance 132-24 at this time? Seeing none, has been read for the first time. Ordinance 133-24, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23, Zone Ordinance 133-24, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23, zoning, Chapter 23.07, Board and Zoning Appeals, Section 23.07.01, Appointment, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
23.07.01 deals with appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we've simply added one word. The BZA shall consist of five members who are electors of the city, appointed slash reappointed by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the council for staggered terms of three years. What this does is address clarity that was lacking when we recently had a reappointment. I believe the Law Director term, used the term that the code did not speak to reappointments. And by adding this word, it does speak to that, and makes it very, very clear. That's the only change in 133-24.
Thank you, Members Swank. Do we have comments on 133-24? From council, administration, or the public? All right, seeing none. Ordinance 133-24 has been read for the first time. And finally, for first reading, ordinance 134-24, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 33, Shade Tree Commission, Section 33.01.01, Commission Membership, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
33.01.01 deals with the Shade Tree Commission. And again, Section A2 reads, all members appointed, reappointed by the mayor with the approval of council shall serve three years. Again, this just brings clarity to the appointment process, and the only thing we've changed is adding the word reappointment, or reappointed. And that is essentially what 134-24 is all about.
Thank you, Members Swank. Do we have additional comments or information about this ordinance? From council, from the administration, from the public? All right, then the ordinance has been read for the first time. We will have special session next week in addition to committee meetings on Monday night. Oh, sorry, 135, sorry. 135, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2403, concerning wages and working conditions. And this was introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. I'll read Section 1. Athens City Council does hereby authorize the mayor to execute an employment agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2403, a copy of which is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2 indicates that the effective date of the term of said agreement is October 5th, 2024 through October 5th, 2027. Section 3, any ordinances or resolutions inconsistent with the terms of the attached agreement are hereby repealed. And finally, Section 4, this ordinance shall be in effect in full force upon its passage and approval by the mayor. Do we have additional information or comments on this ordinance for first reading? From council? Ah, yes.
I have a question. Law Director Eliason, do you see any potential issues with this saying that it basically overrides any existing ordinances that we might have pertaining to employment?
No, these are standard, this is standard language, that the prior contract would be, that this would supersede any prior contracts.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. The ordinance 135-24 has now been read for the first time. I believe that's the last one for first reading.
We have Resolution 1024.
That's right. Do we have a member of council who is willing to read this resolution?
I'll do it.
Thank you, Members Swank.
Our 1024 reads, a resolution to place the issue of increasing the city income tax by thirty hundredths of a percent, point three zero, per annum, beginning January 1, 2026, on the ballot at the next primary election on May the 6th, 2025, and directing the Board of Elections of Athens County to conduct the election.
Thank you, Members Swank. Do we have any comments on this resolution? From council, administration, or the public? All right. Then we need to, do you have a motion? Is that right?
No.
Oh, no. Oh, no, we're good.
It's going to be a three reading.
This will be a three reading, all right. So now we can move on to clarifying that our next meeting will be on Monday night with both a special session of council as well as committee meetings. So if chairs could please have any items they want to bring forward, sent to clerk of council by Wednesday, that would be appreciated. And do we have other announcements or business items from council or administration before we prepare to move into executive session?
Time for citizens to speak.
Thank you. All right, no other announcements. We will move on to opportunities for citizens to speak. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak on a topic that was not already covered on tonight's agenda? If so, please feel free to approach the podium, and you'll be allotted three minutes. Seeing none, I would accept a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing threatened litigation.
I move that we pass into executive session to discuss issues of pending legislation.
In this case, threatened.
Threatened.
Yes.
And that issues of threatened.
Right. To invite into the session, me as the law director.
You're definitely invited. Okay.
And do we have?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to enter executive session with a designated purpose, and it's been seconded all, oh, and we have specified that we would like to include the law director in that executive session. Do we have anything before we take this to a vote?
We'll have roll calls.
And will you facilitate that, or do I need to?
You can.
Okay, great. All right, so Members Spielness.
Hi.
Members Swank?
Yes.
Member McCary?
Yes.
Member Klobbelder?
Yes.
Member Thomas?
Yes.
And law director, do you get to say? You just get invited?
I'll be.
Okay, thanks. And we will be joined by our acting mayor as well. All right. With that, we will enter executive session, which means.
Call for a vote on that.
Thank you, we need to.
We did, actually, we had a roll call.
That roll call votes, and then we will open the door, we'll ask everyone to leave, we'll close the door, and then we will open the door at the conclusion of our executive session to allow for any final questions from members of the public, but.
And then to adjourn the meeting.
And then to formally adjourn the meeting, yes. All right, we will invite the public to exit at this time so that we can prepare for executive session.